All right, let's go ahead and get started. A little after seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody. Uh, this is really exciting for me because this is the last meeting I will ever conduct. So, uh, I'm excited, at least political movie meeting. So let's go ahead and I'll bang the gavel officially saying we're in order. Let's go ahead and start with the rule call, please.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen. Edelgo Ferring.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Mary of Acorn.
All right, let's go ahead and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick reminder to the public. If you want to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Make sure your name's on the list. Anybody get here later than the sign up sheet that wants to go on? All right, then the list is officially closed. Let's go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the October 12th, 2021 regular session minutes?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Susie Edelgo Ferring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the October 12th, 2021 regular session minutes are approved unanimously. Let's go on to agenda revisions and submission of documents. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say or add? Councilmember Christensen? Hold on one second. Okay.
Okay, um, this is the last meeting for both council member, uh, for both Mayor Bagley and I. Um, and both of us went up to the initial meetings of the Northern Arapaho. So they're very dear to our hearts and, uh, I know with that we both want to see the sister cities, uh, um, relationship continue. So I would vote that out of the $225,000 in our contingency fund, we donate $15,000 to the Northern Arapaho so their children can have an easier time coming down here, I hope in the spring, and $5,000 to our kids so they can have an easier time getting up there. Our kids have to earn the money to get up there too. So, or to get anywhere, whether they're going to, um, Japan or, um, Mexico or Wyoming. Um, because this is just a council decision, because it's our contingency fund, I would, uh, move that we take a vote on whether to do that.
All right, Councilmember Christensen, uh, move to put, uh, the issue on a future agenda for $15,000 going to the Northern Arapaho youth and $5,000 going towards the sister cities youth in order to, uh, help and alleviate costs in our youth exchange.
Actually, though, we don't need to put it on the agenda because it's our contingency fund.
Correct, it is the contingent contingency.
We can just vote on it now as for Harold.
Is it, does anyone, that, that's out of order, but is anyone?
Sorry.
No, that, no, that's okay. Is there anybody who objects to voting on that now? I'd love to vote on it now so I could vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so the chair will take that as a motion to vote on that direction now to city count, to the city manager, uh, taking that, those funds out of our contingency funds. That was made by Councilmember Christensen as it was seconded by Councilmember Peck. Uh, the chair will entertain debate on the issue. Anybody want to say or do anything? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. I guess Harold, you don't do it. I guess budgetary staff does, so they'll do, they'll do their thing. All right, thank you.
Did it do her thing?
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing nobody, let's go on to the city manager's report regarding COVID-19.
Mayor, sorry, before you move on, I just wanted to mention item 10D ordinance 2021-55 was amended on second reading and is shown as such on the agenda.
Which one was that again?
Uh, 10D ordinance 2021-55 regarding the CARES program.
Oh, the second, the second ordinance, uh, readings on second ordinance.
On second reading, yes.
Okay, thank you. Harold?
Um, Mayor, Council, um, you know, you, you've seen this graph again. I guess the big point on this is, um, we're seeing, um, in the seven day cumulative case rate moving in the right direction for us based on, on where we've, you know, what we've seen recently. And, um, we hope that that continues. Uh, definitely the numbers for the county are, are trending in the right direction. And you'll also see in terms of high transmission, we really talked about how this was moving around, um, a lot, and it didn't take much to swing it into the red category. But you can see a number of areas are, are moving down again. Um, and as you look at these numbers, um, I think it's important to see that outside of Clear Creek, Boulder, um, Boulder County's doing the best and obviously has the largest population of those that are, um, are in the 150 area when you consider Broomfield in that as well. This is a, another piece that's important to look at when you look at the, the case trends and, um, what's happening with all the cases amongst the age groups. And, and so they, they were today in the administrative call, we're, um, you know, happy to see, you know, the data moving in this direction. When you look at Boulder County, as you remember, early on, there were some disparities in the cases based on percentage of the population by race and ethnicity. And you're really seeing that move more into alignment again. I think it was 70, 17% of the cases. Uh, Longmont unfortunately is still, um, the most significant part of the, the cases in Boulder County as we continue to move forward. What's interesting is this is our wastewater data that we have been showing you. And, um, it may have been updated late this afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to put that in. But this was the most recent graph when I looked at it. And, um, you can see we had a spike and then we had another spike in the most recent reporting cycle. And, and so we're, we're going to have to look at that a little bit to understand what's really driving that. Um, part of what I'm also going to do is, um, just look at what we may have had going on in our community during this time, um, because that may have impacted it. But generally, up until that spike, the trend was moving in the direction we wanted to see it. And, and so we're going to be watching some case counts to see if it really matches, uh, the most recent spike in our wastewater system. In terms of the health system, um, ICU bed availability, it went down from 10% the previous week to 9%. Um, the surgical bed availability is 9%, which is down from 10%. Um, and 37% of the hospitals are still with significant staff shortages, which was, um, remaining relatively steady, steady. And we're, we're, we're seeing the numbers just hold in this arena. What I would say too is, in a lot of ways, this isn't also just COVID. I need to make sure I'm pointing that out. These are other things that when you put the COVID cases on top of it, it creates the capacity issues in the hospital. And so that's an important piece to really, uh, point out in this data. Um, we're still, when we look at the number of cases, uh, exceeding the epidemiological capacity, but we're getting pretty close. Um, and, and we are seeing those, uh, them look into more cases as they're developing. Um, and then, you know, so the deaths, you know, 25 deaths since May 21st. I mean, we're seeing that trend. We're not seeing, uh, the volume with, um, long-term care facilities. Um, so that's a good piece, uh, but they're going to continue to watch the, the data as it moves forward. Today, we really asked if we could get this broken down by vaccinated and unvaccinated so we can get a sense of what's really happening in the community. So hopefully they'll have that data for us next week. Um, and then the testing, we talked about this last week in terms of the seven day positivity. What, um, I talked about it with you all and they talked about it again in the administrator call, that what we may actually start seeing is the number of cases go down, but the positivity rate go up just because of the volume of people that are testing. Um, and so we're fully expecting to see that happen in the near future. But I just wanted to point that out again. Um, in terms of vaccination, uh, 69.7% of the total population, um, is, has both courses. If you look at one or the other, it's 74.7% of the total population. If you look at those that are eligible, it's 84.2%. Part of the conversation today on the vaccination piece is the county is really going to be focusing on vacci, uh, vaccinating those from five to 11, um, as that has just moving forward. And so really right now, they're going to, that's where they're going to be placing most of their attention, um, because we know that could probably, um, have the biggest impact, um, on Boulder County. Um, what I can say on top of that, in terms of the, um, the housing authority, we are seeing some cases in different areas. Um, we're watching those pretty close. What I wanted you to know is when we see that develop, one of the first things that our staff does is they actually engage with Boulder County Health in the state of Colorado. And, and then, uh, we have a series of plans that come in place. And so in case you hear that, when we see it, uh, depending on the volume of cases, um, and, and where, uh, we may make the decision to, um, adjust who can come in and out of the facility. We already have masking requirements because of the order, if you're outside of your domicile. But we may adjust some other things in those areas depending on what we're seeing on case volume. We also then work to get, um, testing coming in with the state. Um, and then depending on where it is and the numbers that are vaccinated, we, we will also talk to the state about maybe coming in and ensuring we can get more people vaccinated. And so just wanted to let you know, um, that we are seeing that at times and, and we move pretty fast on those. Uh, we've had it at a couple of, um, couple of locations. But in case you hear anything, that's what we're doing. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, don't see any questions, but thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, great. Let's move on to special reports and presentations. Uh, Jessica Erickson, she's here with the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, quarterly update for the third quarter of 2021.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and Council. My name is Jessica Erickson. I'm president and CEO of Longmont Economic Development Partnership. And as the mayor said, I'm here to provide our third quarter impact report. I'll start by reminding you of the strategic objectives that are within our contract with the City of Longmont for Economic Development Services. And those include strengthening Longmont's competitive position through implementation of Advanced Longmont 2.0, marketing Longmont nationally and globally as a premier destination for industry and talent, supporting the creation and retention of quality jobs, advancing opportunities for entrepreneurship and innovation, and advocating on behalf of all Longmont businesses. As you're aware, our strategic plan, Advanced Longmont 2.0, has five focus areas. But our work plan, as outlined in our contract with the City of Longmont, has our staff and our resources being focused in the areas of talent, industry, and impact. So I'll start with an update relative to our work on talent. Our first talent objective is to recruit and retain talent with objective 1.1, um, being the marketing and recruitment piece of that. As we've talked about before, the COVID 19, COVID 19 has created a shift in where people work and how people make decisions about where they live and work. And so we have updated our national talent attraction marketing campaign to address that. I'll provide some more detail on that in a later slide. Our second objective or objective 1.2 is to improve workforce perceptions through our workforce perception study, uh, which we conducted this year and closed in July with 207 responses versus 62 last year, which was the first year of the study. We did present this, the full report to the Longmont EDP Board Meeting at our August 9th, 2021 Board Meeting. So some more detail around our national marketing campaign. Uh, we've really, uh, approached it from a more human centered or what we consider human centered approach, helping people to identify themselves in people that are already living here, working here, and experiencing life in Longmont. And so our tagline there is see yourself in Longmont. And we launched this new campaign in August of this year. The campaign includes a mix of media, including paid search, LinkedIn advertising, Facebook advertising, and programmatic retargeting and display advertising. We identified specific geographies throughout the country to target based on what we identified as an oversupply of the type of talent that the industry that we have clustered here in Longmont is in need of. And so those geographies are Los Angeles, San Diego, Phoenix, Orange County, and Denver. So we're about 30 days in, or as of when I prepared this report, we were about 30 days into the new campaign and had experienced 353,000 campaign impressions, 1,660 clicks from our ad campaign. The top five locations of where people were actually clicking through on our ad campaign were Kansas, Colorado, California, Pennsylvania, and Arizona. We had 4,371 website users. Our average typically is 1,987, which is, so we about doubled our average website users. The top three ad groups were the kind of topics of our ads that people were clicking through on, and we're just generally, general talent acquisition as well as specifically talent acquisition relative to our business catalyst and knowledge creation and deployment, uh, industry clusters. Phoenix of all of those markets that we mentioned is pulling better than all other markets on LinkedIn, on the LinkedIn platform. LA had the highest overall engagement and Phoenix and Orange County had the highest engagement with ads across all platforms. Uh, in getting ready for tonight, I realized that you have seen this before. This is the results of the workforce perception study. So if it's okay with you and the interest of time and the fact that you've seen this before, um, unless you want me to stop, I will move through these slides on the workforce perception study and go to our second talent objective, which is industry and future responsive infrastructure. The first, uh, part of that objective is talent intelligence, data, and infrastructure. We use our Elevate State of Industry Report, uh, which is due November 8th to include data from the Elevate Longmont Survey, which is our primary employer survey that we do annually, as well as feedback from the Skilled Workforce Executive Roundtable Discussions that we hosted and Q3, in Q3 industry data that we've assessed. We've also identified the My Sidewalk database tool, uh, to be our ongoing, um, measure of, uh, our, of talent intelligence data with an emphasis on community data from more than 40 different sources that they aggregate for us. We're partnering with a local education technology company, Indigo, to develop a career pathways platform that will be unique to Longmont that I'll provide some more detail about in a later slide. Relative to supporting our existing talent systems, which includes St. Brain Valley School District, Front Range Community College, and workforce Boulder County, we've provided information about those resources to 18 primary industry expansion and, uh, attraction proposals, so including that information in proposals, uh, for those projects, as well as have directly referred 12 companies to our regional education and training system partners. We continue to migrate into our new CRM to better facilitate and track results related to, uh, those referrals and proposals. I'd like to talk about the, or provide some more detail on the workforce development platform that I mentioned. We are again partnering with a local education technology company, Indigo, to develop a one of it, one of its kind platform for workforce development. It will provide employers with support in finding local talent that fits their corporate culture and open job roles. It's intended to help employers provide best fit career paths to grow and retain talent and cut hiring costs. And it's a lower cost platform than many of the national recruiting tools with more qualified, and will have more qualified local candidates. For job seekers, it provides support for them to know themselves and find local employment opportunities that best fit their natural strengths and point job seekers to local education and professional development opportunities to obtain higher paying jobs. I'll mention that the kind of genesis of this project was a conversation around helping, uh, workers displaced by COVID to identify new career pathways for themselves here locally. Uh, it's expanded beyond that, which I'll talk to you about here in a second. It supports our education systems, including St. Brain Valley School District and Front Range Community College and other local education providers who will access the platform, um, to gain data to better support students and point students to local opportunities. So as students go through the educational programs, uh, specifically of the advanced or the manufacturing academy at St. Brain Valley School District and the Center for Integrated Manufacturing at Front Range Community College. We'll also support workforce development and nonprofit programs throughout the community. Workforce Boulder County will be able to access the Longmont pathway data to better support job seekers through their system. And in fact, we're in the process of responding to Workforce Development Innovation, RFP, from workforce Boulder County to support this work. We've also expanded the target for beneficiaries of this, uh, platform to other community organizations, including Veterans Community Project, Reentry Initiative, and Pearl, all local nonprofit organizations that have a workforce development, uh, career readiness, uh, element to the services that they offer. I thought I had a timeline in here. Um, so the, we are currently working with Front Range Community College directly and as well as Smuckers and a couple of other employers locally, uh, to start to get, um, uh, current job seekers as well as those that will be applying to the newly created, uh, Smuckers opportunities with their expansion as really a pilot for, um, for this platform. That will happen, that's happening between now and the end of the year. And then we expect to fully launch the platform to everyone in the first quarter of next year. Next, I'll talk about our industry objectives. So our first industry objective is primary industry expansion and retention with objective 1.1 being the use of state and local incentives. We have not had any incentives fully approved as of yet this year, although we're hoping to change that this evening with final approval of the incentive for a light deck. I do have some North Metro Enterprise Zone data that I'll share with you in another slide. And then we have a goal to generate 50 new primary industry prospects for the year. And so far through Q, sorry, Q3 2021, we had generated 30 new prospect leads for expansion and relocation. The North Metro Enterprise Zone, we've had 257 companies pre-certify for use of the North Metro Enterprise Zone benefits. And 52 of them so far have certified to actually use those benefits. You can see the breakdown of the tax credits that have been used and the resulting investment in job creation. Those numbers are still low for this year. Many companies get extensions to about this time of the year to file their tax returns. So we expect to see those numbers go up, uh, pretty significantly after the fourth quarter. Our prospect pipeline, as of the end of, of Q3, we had 24 active prospects in our pipeline that if we were fortunate enough to win them all, would represent, uh, over 4,300 jobs at an average annual wage of over $80,000 a year and more than $400 million in capital investment. The breakdown of the industries that those projects are coming from, about a third of them are coming from the knowledge creation and deployment sector. It's been a very active sector for us, um, as well as smart manufacturing. And then food and beverage and business catalysts make up, uh, 16% combined with all other industries making up the other about third of projects that we have in our pipeline. Our second industry objective is around entrepreneurial development, uh, specifically hosting the Innovate Longmont Accelerator Program, which we are in the process of transitioning to an exclusively smart manufacturing-focused accelerator program with the first cohort of that launching on January 18th of next year. In the interest of that, we've added two new board members from H2 Manufacturing Solutions and Winter Winds Robotics, a graduate of our previous accelerator program. And applications are actually live now for, um, the January accelerator cohort. Relative to developing the entrepreneurial ecosystem and the No Wrong Door, uh, platform that we identified startup spaces as the technology for, the Longmont Entrepreneurial Hub, which is what we've named our platform, has 25 total resources available on it, 36 events, and in Q3 saw 74 new users. So we now have a total of over 500 users using that startup space platform. We continue to onboard other resource providers and identify other potential users. These are people that are interested in identifying specifically entrepreneurial resources that are available to them in Longmont in the immediate area. Finally, I'll talk about, uh, the impact, our impact objectives. The first of those being organizational alignment, so really the collective impact model of the implementation of our Advanced Longmont 2.0 strategic plan. Many of you are on some of our working groups, so you're aware that we've realigned the working groups around strategic initiatives instead of around specific focus areas. And so we now have six currently active Advanced Longmont 2.0 strategic initiatives, which results in six currently active working groups. The collective data dashboard, which is really kind of the progress report of Advanced Longmont 2.0, is something that we've been working on, uh, to develop. And we've also identified My Sidewalk as the data aggregator and visualization tool that we'll use for that and are confident that we will launch that before the end of this year. I mentioned that we have six currently active collective impact initiatives. That includes the No Wrong Door ecosystem for entrepreneurs that I mentioned, the slope, which we've formally referred to as the maker block, accessible and affordable childcare, the River District, our ramp project, which I'll go into more detail about, and Prosper Longmont. So the ramp project is a new one that I think you may not have, um, or we may not have reported out on before, so I wanted to share that with you. It's the Readiness Accelerated Manufacturing and Production, uh, Facility. We've actually been working on this project since 2018, uh, with some private sector industry partners. It will ultimately be a smart manufacturing incubator facility designed to take a company past the prototype phase into initial production, allowing them to refine the production process and begin to make inroads into the commercial marketplace. And one of my favorite parts about this project has been that we have engaged the local entrepreneurial community within these industries to help us design and, uh, create a strategy for this facility. The collective impact piece of this is the partnership between private industry, Longmont EDP, Innovate Longmont, Front Range Community College, and St. Brain Valley School District, making this project possible where we alone could not make this project possible. We, Longmont EDP alone could not make this project possible. We are pursuing, um, an ARPA EDA economic adjustment grant. And, uh, Front Range Community College and St. Brain Valley School District have signed on to be co-applicants for that grant, which we think strengthens our opportunity to pursue those funds. We're also pursuing a state of Colorado Advanced Industries Accelerator Program to make this project possible. I'll mention that the, um, the, uh, state of Colorado grant is due this month and the, uh, federal grant is due in December. So we expect to have, uh, news of whether or not we've successfully pursued those funds by the first part of next year. Our second impact or a continuation of our impacted objective around organizational alignment is to increase private sector funding for economic development. I have a funding table later in the report. We did, we were able to this year, because of a drop in private sector funding last year and the first part of this year, secure two PPP loans totaling $163,000 to shore up our, uh, funding for the year to be able to continue to operate at the same level we always have. And we have now launched a multi-year impact oriented fundraising strategy called Vivid Vision. Uh, we launched that in September of this year. So for this year, um, we're projecting a total budget of 734,000, which while not back to the level we were at, uh, in 2019, significantly better than, uh, 2020 with the impacts of COVID. I want to talk to you about the Vivid Vision Private Sector Funding Campaign. This is a multi-year campaign that's really our kind of final transition as an organization from kind of the old school membership, transactional membership-based model that we used to pursue to a really impact investment oriented model. We're asking the private sector to invest in our organization, recognizing that they may not themselves see the immediate and transactional benefits, but that they're really, as this quote says, planting trees for future generations. Sorry, the mask thing is. Our vision, of course, as we talk about all the time, is collective impact and we do that through elevating business and empowering community. Longmont Economic Development Partnership, we believe, exists to build and maintain a vibrant and inclusive local economy and to help Longmont achieve its full potential for growth, prosperity, and inclusion. We believe ourselves to be a true public-private partnership, leveraging the time, talent, and treasure of leaders from both the public and private sectors in unprecedented ways. How we work together does not happen in other places. To ensure Longmont's continued success and to make Longmont the most desirable location for businesses, entrepreneurs, and talent in the region. We believe that success will happen when everyone in Longmont has equal access to participate in our local economy as entrepreneurs, workers, and consumers. Everyone has the ability to advance in their careers, build wealth, and invest in their futures. And everyone is able to drive business growth through innovation and business and job creation. This is what we're asking the private sector to invest in. We think that we're the right organization to lead the charge relative to this because of the results that we've been able to experience over the last few years. And looking just at 2018 to 2020, the previous three years, we've successfully won 40 relocation and expansion deals that have created, uh, more than 1,200 new jobs and will provide a net tenure fiscal impact of 27 million. tenure fiscal impact of $27 million to our community. This is the first time we're doing a true multi-year fundraising campaign for economic development. This budget represents the total budget for each year of those three years, inclusive of both public and private sector funds. As we've mentioned before, we're looking over the next three years to raise $1.2 million from the private sector, which is about half of that budget. The reason I wanted to share this is because there was some conversation a couple of weeks ago around the impacts of, or the rationale behind a public-private partnership for economic development. We don't look at raising funds from the private sector as an issue of who has control over the organizations, over the organization or economic development in the city. We look at it more as a matter of accountability. Arguably, in addition to the city itself, it's our primary sector employers, our property owners, our local businesses in the private sector that are benefiting from the work of Longmont EDP. And it's our belief that they should also be accountable for funding it. And you can see here a breakdown of how those dollars are spent. About half of it is spent on what we consider traditional economic development and those things that are in our contract with the City of Longmont, new business development, entrepreneurial development, national marketing, and business retention and expansion, with the remainder going towards our collective impact work, data and research, and operations, as well as the advocacy work that we do through our private sector leadership. Our second impact objective is collective problem solving. And we have created the Aspire Leadership Council, which is currently a 28-member, private-sector-led leadership council for our organization with members from primary industry, finance, real estate, construction, local business, legal, and marketing professions. They have provided 100% of the funding for our national marketing efforts. So with our previous campaign, our Reach for the Peaks campaign, one of the objectives of that campaign was to raise the funds necessary to actually implement a full-scale professional national marketing campaign for talent and for industry for the City of Longmont, something we had never been able to do before. And so 100% of that funding came from, from our private sector Aspire Leadership Council investors. A portion of those funds that they contribute also goes to what we call our aspire fund. These are funds that those investors are able to direct to pursue aspirational initiatives, not included in our annual work plan or budget, again entirely funded by those private sector investments. Their primary focus areas currently for both their engagement as well as their funding is workforce housing and talent. The two go hand in hand, of course. So one of the initiatives that they're currently funding is one of our collective impact initiatives, Prosper Longmont, which is an initiative to develop a coalition of private sector leadership around attainable housing. With the objectives first, and you've heard this from me before, to do no harm, so to consider affordability of housing in all policymaking by the city, to set goals and measure progress, so to identify through a data-informed approach what the true gap is relative to attainable housing, what the goals should be, and the progress that we make as we move forward collectively. Aligning policy and process with vision, this goes across all of the work that we do. So working in partnership with you and with city staff to identify and address the barriers that exist in our current code zoning and development review process that prevent us from achieving attainable housing goals established in both Envision Longmont Goal, Envision Longmont and Advanced Longmont 2.0. And then finally, innovate and create. We truly believe that the solution to attainable housing, also affordable housing, and most things that we do relative to economic development, will not be public sector solutions, private sector solutions, nonprofit solutions, or education sector solutions, but a collective set of solutions that we can all bring our, our expertise to the table to achieve. And this is just a list of the founding members of Prosper Longmont. We really believe that we have a diverse set of perspectives as well as a broad range of expertise to bring to ideas around solutions for attainable housing. And then finally, I'll give you a brief economic overview from our economic modeling system. I'll skip to the second bullet, which is that from 2015 to 2020, we did still see overall net increase in jobs across all industries of 1.3%. And this outpaced, paced the national average of 0.01%, or basically zero growth over the same five years. We estimate that we'll see another 0.8% in job growth across all industries this year, which will be slightly under the national growth rate or aligned with the national growth rate of 0.9%. The preliminary unemployment rate at the end of August, which is the most recent available at the local level here in Longmont, was 5.2%. With the statewide unemployment rate at the end of August being 5.9%, Boulder County as a whole, 4.9%, and nationally, 5.2%. When we look at our target industry clusters, knowledge creation and deployment has been our most consistent sector, seeing growth even through 2020. Our projection for this year is another 1.5% growth. Our business catalyst cluster, which saw a slowdown in 2020, is projected to grow by 2.4% this year. Smart manufacturing, which saw a significant loss of jobs, where we will start to see some recovery of in this year. And then food and beverage, which relative to COVID, saw the highest loss of jobs in 2020. And we expect to continue to see some loss, though projections are that starting in 2022 we'll see, start to see some of those, that job growth come back in Longmont. I think that's my last slide.
All right. Thank you very much. Nobody's in the queue, but I want to, actually, people are in the queue now. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Jessica, this is a good report. I really like it. And I like the, the Indigo and part of the initiatives. But I do have a concern, and I was a little surprised about the prosper because the only thing that we had seen was in the TC line, TC, not the line, the paper, about this being formed. But as I read through this, I'm concerned about LEDP getting too much into the policymaking in, which is council's job, not LEDP's job, and working with staff. So all of your data is, is great and accepted and we've, from my perspective, have always worked with LEDP on housing. But when I read each one of these, it just puts up a red flag for me in that we're getting a little bit too much into the policymaking. And when you talk about the housing that is needed, we do have staff that is, that does, works that up for us all, every year, constantly. So that's just a red flag for me. As that's what Prosper Longmont, that's all they're doing is getting into the housing and the policymaking. So other than that, I think it's a great report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley and Councilwoman Peck. I appreciate the comment and I understand where it's coming from. I will say again that our focus with everything that we do is on the collective and the idea that pieces of the whole don't get us to where we need to be relative to any of our goals. And so where we have private sector leaders that have expertise in the areas of lending and building and those employers that have employees and what the wages that they're paying and understanding what their needs are, I think all of that needs to be recognized in order for, and we have that to bring to the table, that perspective to bring to the table as you all are making policy decisions. We would not suggest that we are policymakers or policy decision makers. Our only goal is to help inform where we can and bring the expertise that we have as part of our private sector leadership to the table as part of that conversation.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that any resident of Longmont, any agency in Longmont, and certainly any agency for Longmont, well, are, they are not empowered to make policy. They certainly are empowered to advocate for policies for the benefit of the city, however they see that benefit themselves. I think that when the LEDP chooses what kinds of business to advocate for, to recruit, to come to Longmont, or to assist that are already in Longmont, that is advocacy, not policymaking. And when the LEDP requires or would benefit from city funding, then we hold an executive session and the advocacy can become policy based upon the opinions of the council. So I just would like to defend this activity because I think it's really important. There's, there's a growing dynamic about, you know, what, what kind of, of activity in Longmont will help with our housing crisis and help not only our primary employers, but you know, I'm, I'm starting to have conversations about taking some of these techniques that LEDP is implementing and looking at whether the city can use them in its own recruiting efforts. So I'm, I really approve of these activities, especially Prosper Longmont.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. One other thing that I'll mention is I recently had the opportunity to participate in the Economic Development Council of Colorado Annual Conference. I and our partner at Cornerstone Home Lending were actually invited there to be part of really what was a half-day conversation around workforce housing being economic development because of some of the innovative partnerships that we're pursuing, including the Start to Home program that we have with Cornerstone Home Lending. And it really was refreshing to have, again, that much conversation with, and the Economic Development Council of Colorado is policymakers, it's economic development practitioners, it's private sector leaders of those types of organizations that are interested in economic development and benefit from economic development. And so that's really what I, we hope to facilitate here in Longmont as well.
All right. Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Jessica. I, I really love the idea of Indigo. Will people, the average person looking for a job have access to this for free?
Yes, it will, sorry.
That sounds great.
Excuse me, Councilmember Christiansen, yes, it will absolutely, 100% of the time, always be free to the job seeker. We've identified funding sources for the development of the platform and we're pursuing additional funding sources for the ongoing maintenance and management in hopes that it can be free for employers forever too. If we were ever to have to generate revenue in support of the ongoing maintenance of the platform, it would be on the employer's side and never on the job seeker's side.
When do you imagine that will be up and running?
Early next year.
Oh, that'll be great. Yeah. That's, that's a wonderful program. That'll be enormously helpful to both employers and employees and especially our kids graduating. And I think Ramp is a great idea too, because as you know, smart manufacturing is something we've had a tough time with, manufacturing period, you know, is, and it's just a huge transition from, well, anyway. And it's something that Front Range has dealt a lot with and they're very good at that. My big concern is also Prosper Longmont. I look through and every, one of these things are things that our staff is already doing. I, I don't really like the idea of taking taxpayer money and LEDP is funded mostly by taxpayer money and using it for things that we're already doing. And in fact, the language being used here, attainable workforce housing instead of affordable housing is, attainable housing has no kind of definition. Affordable housing has a legal definition, no more than 30% of your take-home pay, no, pre-tax pay. And so to keep using that attainable housing, attainable housing, attainable housing tells me where it's coming from. And I feel like it's something set up to undermine the policies that we have spent so long trying to implement. In fact, LEDP and the Longmont Association of Realtors and the Chamber of Commerce have repeatedly come to advocate against affordable housing and advocate for metro, residential metro districts. So I, I feel like this is very, is a very strange thing to start doing right now. And furthermore, I've been on the placemaking Advanced 2.0 for close to a year and nothing has happened with that. And I, I don't really think this is a, you know, myself, I think this is not a good use of money or time, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Christiansen. Mayor Bagley, if I may, just respond to a couple points there. First, Longmont EDP at no point ever opposed affordable housing or affordable housing policy. We showed up to encourage that any affordable housing policy also consider its impacts on attainable housing, the 80 to 120% AMI housing that we've identified. We have not ever, and we all believe that affordable housing is a necessary piece, the affordable housing that you're talking about, is a necessary piece of full spectrum housing as we've identified as a community, as part of our goal for our community, that that piece is absolutely critical. But we also believe that, and we've been hearing from our employers since 2018, that the attainable housing, the 80 to 120% AMI housing is critical and has only become more challenging since then. And so that's why, again, the whole conversation around right now, housing is economic development. Because if not for the availability of housing that's attainable to the employees of our primary employer base, the rest of what we do, we cannot be successful with, whether it be talent attraction or then ultimately the attraction of new business investment as well as the retention, retention of our existing primary industry base here. We absolutely recognize the work that staff is doing and does relative to data and information. And that has been an ongoing conversation between Longmont EDP and staff, so that a back and forth conversation where we have information that may be of value, like the feedback from our primary employer base, that's the kind of information that we're bringing to the table. We're in no way trying to replace or replicate the work that staff is doing.
All right. Thank you very much. We could all keep talking about this, but thank you for the report and we appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to First Call Public Invited to Be Heard. There are three people on the list. Mr. Benson, I will not lie, I'm glad to see you're here for my last meeting. So let's put you, let's, let's put you last, let's go Dan Betts up here from Loveland. I imagine you're here representing somebody.
I am.
All right.
I'm, I work for Congressman Ken Buck. I know most of you. And a while back, Congressman Buck did this nice congressional record congratulating Longmont on its 150th anniversary. And we actually did this in July and we've been trying to try to schedule the congressman to come and do some sort of event, if it was a 150th anniversary thing, or come here or whatever. We just could not make the schedule work, so you're stuck with me. And so if you, if you don't mind, I'll just read this really quickly.
Go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and, is anyone opposed to me stopping the timer, given that it's a congressional?
It's probably 30 seconds anyway.
Okay, go ahead, Dan. That's, that's why I like you, Dan.
I knew there was a reason. Okay, so it says, Madam Speaker, I rise today to commemorate the 150th anniversary of the founding of Longmont, Colorado. In 1870, a group of Chicagoans established- In 1870, a group of Chicagoans established a new settlement in northern Colorado, calling themselves the Colorado-Chicago Colony. The new settlers sold membership in their adventurous enterprise, using those funds to finance the construction of a town hall and the purchase of 60,000 acres of land for their new town. By mid-1871, the settlers had decided on a name for their new town, Longmont, after the nearby Long's Peak. Since then, immigrants from around the world have flocked to Longmont. Longmont has thrived amid rapid population growth and the arrival and expansion of both its agricultural and technological industries. Today, more than 94,000 individuals call Longmont home. Not only is the city full of history, but it remains a popular place to live, with many major STEM employers, miles of recreation trails, a thriving dining and beverage scene, and stunning views of Long's Peak. Longmont has been ranked by numerous publications as one of the top places to live in the United States. On behalf of the 4th Congressional District of Colorado, I'm honored to celebrate this special occasion alongside the tens of thousands of my constituents who call Longmont home. Ken Buck, Member of Congress. So can I, do you mind if I?
Yeah, actually, can we, you guys, should we take a picture? Let's take a picture, if you don't mind. Yep, come on, we're going to treat this like it's, like part of the schedule.
Go ahead, just, Dan, you go ahead and stand in the middle, right next to Suzy. There you go, perfect.
And should we, should we go ahead and take the picture and remove the masks?
Push in. Push in.
Hold your breath, hold your breath. So what do you want me to do? Do you want me to hold it?
Yeah, just like that.
Hand it, yeah, so.
There you go, Mayor. Okay, one, two, three. Take one more. There you go. Got it. Thank you, Dan.
All right, let's go on to, are we doing okay? It's, we doing all right? Should we blaze through Consent Agenda? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you know? Sorry, Strider, I was looking forward to you, let's don't have you up. No, Nicole Frinkle? Okay, got it, got it. All right, Strider, make it a good one, buddy.
No pressure or nothing.
Yeah, yeah. Wish I could walk better.
I wish I could mayor better, but.
Is it on?
All right.
Nope.
Yep, it's on, you're good to go.
Yeah, Strider Benson, 951 West 17th. And greetings, City Council and Mayor Bagley. I'm glad I got to be here to, you might call it, honor you on the completion of your tenure as mayor. And Council, which you might not say always collegial, but is very good at spirited and competent discourse, and I really appreciate that. That is why we have elections and a democracy in this country, which is under very serious threat right now. Sorry, I happen to be redundant on this, but it's getting more serious all the time. Theodore Roosevelt, in about 1904, pointed out that the danger of monopolies is not only that they pose an economic threat to dominate the economy, but they pose a political threat and the possible abrogation of our republic. The current move on the part of the cult to gerrymandering and promoting violence and targeting and suppression of the vote and registration and intimidation is pervasive in this country, and it's come down to school boards, where there is violence and threats of violence to people who speak about education and who are elected by the population. Pretty much all over the country, not everywhere, but in many pieces of the country. And the false attack on what they call critical race theory, which really what they mean is history, let's not allow history in this country. And the banning and later on, the burning of books is part of that game. Monopolies of social media, which promotes false and violent, violent supposed information. And the banks, which dominate the economy. The, in the last generation, about a third to a half of the wealth, the bottom half of the population, has been stolen by the top 1% who have made laws such that they don't pay any taxes. That's how serious our country has become. A lot of people see the disruption in Congress, and they want to have a dictatorship, have a king or a queen or a dictator to tell us what to do or not do. And that is serious. And the person I first learned history from was Fannie Lou Hamer. I was 20 years old and the first adult to ever hear her speak truth with a capital T. Thank you much.
My apologies for letting Mr. Benson go over. I promise I will never do it again. All right, let's go on to, Dawn, could you please read us the Consent Agenda and Introduction and Reading by the titles on the first reading of the ordinances, please? Yeah, yeah, we'll see you tomorrow.
Mayor, item 9A is ordinance 2021-65, a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting chapters 1604, 1606, 1612, 1614, 1616, 1620, 1622, 1628, and 1640 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2019 edition of the International Building Residential Mechanical Fuel Gas Plumbing Property Maintenance Energy Conservation Swimming Pool and Spa and Existing Building Codes. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 30, 2021. 9B is ordinance 2021-66, a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter 16.32 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 30, 2021. 9C is ordinance 2021-67, a bill for an ordinance designating the Hawkins-Hawkins House at 821 Collier Street as a local historic landmark. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 9, 2021. 9D is ordinance 2021-68, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to amend the lease for Vance brand municipal airport hangar parcel known as Hangar Parcel SH6T. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 9, 2021. 2022 budget resolutions under E are Resolution 2021-105, a resolution amending the financial policies of the city of Longmont for 2022. Resolution 2021-106, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the city of Longmont 2022 classification and pay plan for city employees. Resolution 2021-107, under 9F, is a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing the transfer of a portion of the unencumbered appropriation balance of the employee benefit fund to the employee pension fund. 9G is Resolution 2021-108, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado and participating local governments for the allocation of national opioid settlement funds. 9H, Resolution 2021-109, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Housing Authority to operate and administer a locally funded voucher program. 9I is Resolution 2021-110, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Housing Authority to provide CDBG funding for a security improvement project at the Suites Apartments. 9J is Resolution 2021-111, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and St. Braine Valley School District for a joint school resource officer program. 9K is Resolution 2021-112, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Department of the Navy for cooperation with civilian law enforcement officials for the lease of night vision binoculars. 9L is Resolution 2021-113, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Denver Regional Council of Governments for the letter of intent to participate in the 2022 Denver Regional aerial photography project. 9M is Resolution 2021-114, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for an American Rescue Plan Act grant to purchase self-checkout machines. And 9N is Resolution 2021-115, a resolution of the Longmont City Council conditionally approving the LFM Business Improvement District's 2022 operating plan and draft budget.
All right, before the chair entertains a motion for the consent agenda, who would like to remove some items? Dr. Waters, you first?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. I would like to remove item A, item E1, and item E2.
Councilmember Christensen, you're in the queue. Do you have anything else?
Yes, yes, just briefly for a question about N.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion for the passage of the consent agenda less 9A, 9E1, 9E2, and 9N. I'll second it. It was moved by Councilmember Waters, it was seconded by myself. The consent agenda, no dialogue, debate necessary. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, the consent agenda passes unanimously, less A, E1, E2, and N. All right, let's go on to ordinances on second reading and their public hearings. Let's go with 10A, ordinance 2021-44, a bill for an ordinance amending title 14.32 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Rates and Regulations Governing Electric Services. Any questions from council? Don't see anybody in the queue. Let's go ahead and open this up for the public hearing. Anybody that want to come up and address and yell at us for rates? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll move ordinance 2021-44.
All right, ordinance 2021-44 was moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Seeing no further debate, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-44 passes unanimously. Let's go on to 10B, ordinance 2021-50, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021. There's no, there's no report. Dr. Waters?
I'll move ordinance 2021-44.
Go ahead, is your mic working? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, that was Councilmember Peck, you're in the queue, sorry.
I move ordinance B02021-50.
All right, it's been moved, but before we do that, let's go ahead and open it up. Before we vote, let's go ahead and open it up to public hearing. Anyone want to come address council regarding ordinance 2021-50? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, all in favor of ordinance 2021-50, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance 2021-50 passes unanimously. Let's go on to our budget ordinances. C1, ordinance 2021-51, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the city of Longmont for the year 2021 to pay budgeted city expenses for the fiscal, for the 2022 fiscal year. Nobody's in the queue on council. We're going to go ahead and open it for public hearing. Anyone want to come address this ordinance? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, seeing that no one wants to speak. All right, can we have a motion? Councilmember Martin?
I move adoption of ordinance 2021-52.
51.
51, excuse me.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Dogal Ferring. Seeing nobody in the queue, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of ordinance 2021-51, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance 2021-51 passes unanimously. Let's go on to, I'm sorry, C2, ordinance 2021-52, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2021 to pay budgeted expenses to the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2022 fiscal year. Any questions from council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it for public hearing. Would anyone like to come down and address ordinance 2021-52? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion for ordinance 2021-52?
I'll move ordinance 2021-52.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Waters, it was seconded by Councilmember Christensen. Seeing no further debate, all in favor of ordinance 2021-52, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance 2021-52 passes unanimously. Be patient, there's quite a few tonight, guys, sorry. C3, ordinance 2021-53, a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2022. Seeing nobody in the queue, we'll go ahead and open it for public hearing. Anyone want to come down and address the budget? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Can we have a motion, please? I'll second that. Actually, we'll let Councilmember Peck do that. All right, ordinance 2021-53 was moved by Councilmember Christensen, it was seconded by Councilmember Peck. Seeing no further questions, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, motion, or ordinance 2021-53 passes unanimously. All right, C4, which is ordinance 2021-54, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022. Let's go ahead and, we don't see anybody in the queue, so let's go ahead and open it for public hearing. Anyone want to come down and address ordinance 2021-54? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? All right, Councilmember Peck went ahead and moved ordinance 2021-54. We'll take the simultaneous motion by Councilmember Martin, as well as Councilmember Christensen, as seconds. Seeing no dialogue and debate, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance 2021-54 passes unanimously. CD, which is ordinance 2021-55, a bill for an ordinance amending section 4.08.040 of the Longmont Municipal Code on City Rebate Programs for Income-Qualified Residents. Do you want to say something, Becky?
This is the one we had to make the revision to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to go over it.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, members of council, Becky Doyle. Just wanted to call your attention to the revision in ordinance 55, where we updated the table of numbers, so that the rebate provided for stormwater charges through the Longmont Cares Program is actually higher than what was presented on first reading, because that had the annual increase in the rate, as opposed to the cumulative increase across the three years that are represented. So the new table of numbers is correct.
All right, so did we do the public hearing on this? I don't think we did, right? So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance 2021-55. Would anyone like to come down and address this in light of the new information? Or in light of the old information? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. On ordinance 2021-55, can we have a motion, please?
I'll move on ordinance 2021-55.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Dogal Ferring, it was seconded by Councilmember Christensen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-55 is passed unanimously. CE, ordinance 2021-56, a bill for an ordinance amending section 14.24.040 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Stormwater System Charges. See, let's go ahead and open, let's go ahead and open it for public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Martin? All right, it was moved by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Dogal Ferring. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-56 passes unanimously. All right, CF, ordinance 2021-57, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand municipal airport hangar parcel H18C to Aerosphere Inc. We'll go ahead and open it for public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close it, close the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please? Mayor Protam?
I move ordinance 2021-57.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor of ordinance 2021-57, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, the motion passes. Ordinance 2021-57 is passed on second reading. Let's go ahead to CG, ordinance 2021-58, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to amend the lease for Vance brand municipal airport hangar parcel known as Hangar Parcel H71. Let's go ahead and open it for public hearing, anyone? Seeing no one, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll move ordinance 2021-58.
All right, ordinance 2021-58 was moved by Councilmember Dogal Ferring, seconded by Councilmember Christensen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-5- Ordinance 2021-58 passes unanimously. Let's go on to CH, ordinance 2021-59, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to amend the lease for Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel known as Hangar Parcel H74. Let's go ahead and open it to public hearing. Seeing no one, let's go ahead and close it. Can we have a motion, please?
I move ordinance 2021-59.
I'll second it. Councilmember Martin seconded it, I, or Councilmember Martin made the motion, I seconded it. All in favor of ordinance 2021-59, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, council, or ordinance 2021-59 passes unanimously. Ordinance 2021 SIG-60, which is CI in today's program, a bill for an ordinance approving an economic incentive agreement with M Biodiagnostics, Inc. Let's go ahead and open it for public hearing. Seeing none, let's close it. I'll move ordinance 2021-60.
Second.
Was seconded by Mayor Peck, or Councilmember Peck? Yeah, right, I slipped. You're going to use that, won't you? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance 2021-60 passes unanimously. Ordinance 2021-61, CJ, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code adopting an amendment to the city of Longmont Police Employees Pension Plan and Trust Agreement. Let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Seeing no one, let's go ahead and close it. All in favor, or let's say, have a motion, please?
I move ordinance 2021-61.
Second.
All right, moved by Mayor Protam Rodriguez, seconded by Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. All in favor of ordinance 2021-61, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance 2021-61 passes unanimously. Is it me, or does it feel like an auction tonight? All right, right? Item CK, ordinance 2021-62, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code adopting amendment to the city of Longmont Fire Employees Pension Plan and Trust Agreement. Let's go ahead and open it for public hearing. Seeing no one, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll move ordinance 2021-62.
Second.
All right, Dr. Waters moved ordinance 2021-62. Councilmember Christensen seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-62 passes unanimously. CL, which is ordinance 2021-63, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code adopting amendments to the city of Longmont Old Hire Police Pension Plan and Old Hire Fire Pension Plan. Going to go ahead and open it for public hearing. Seeing no one, let's go ahead and close it. I'll move ordinance 2021-63. Seconded by Councilmember Christensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-63 passes unanimously. Ordinance 2021-64, bill for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code adopting an amendment to the employee contribution requirement of the city of Longmont General Employees Retirement Plan. Let's go ahead and open it for public hearing. Seeing none, let's close it.
I move 2021-64. Second.
All right, ordinance 2021-64 was moved by Councilmember Peck, seconded by Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ordinance 2021-64 passes unanimously. All right, now we're back to items, my items removed from the consent agenda. Only takes 10 years to get it done quick. All right, let's go ahead to items removed from the consent agenda. It's only eight, 10, we can squeeze this out. All right, let's go back, I think, let's go in order. Dr. Waters, were you nine A?
I was.
All right, let's go ahead and deal with nine A. Time is yours.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Just so councilmembers know, I'm going to vote for this, this ordinance, but I would, Baz, is Baz here? Baz, could you, could you just answer, just confirm for me? When we, when we met with you and the captain to look at fire codes and building codes, all of which is good work, we're doing, I think, what we need to do. I did ask the question in that conversation, were there costs associated with code updates? Could you remind me of, at least of two of them? One was, in the new code that we will approve on second reading, the requirement that new construction, new residential construction be configured for the ease of installation of solar panels, which is a good thing to do. The second is that every garage would be equipped with a charging station for electric vehicles, also a good thing to do, but not without costs. I think I remember what those numbers were. Could you just refresh my memory what the cost is?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Yeah, the numbers, we did a quick survey, we did call some electrical contractors, and we wanted to get an idea of what it would cost to make a typical home EV-ready. And when we say EV-ready, what we're talking about is a circuit that runs from the electrical panel to an outlet, either in the garage or wherever they choose to have the charging station. It can vary depending on the owners sometimes. But based on the research I did, the cost for the EV-ready outlet and the cable and everything would come to about anywhere from 500 to about $1,000.
And for the, the ease of installation of?
The ease of installation of the solar array would entail a conduit that runs from the electrical panel to the top of the roof and then just capped off, ready to run power cables if the owner chooses to do that. It's simply the installation of conduit, which is not a major expense. So, we estimated that to be anywhere from 50 to $100.
Okay, those numbers are lower than what we talked about when we worked together. So, that's?
They were, and we looked into it further, and we, we were, we were looking at markups that the builder might put in there. But again, you have to think that these are new homes, so there's not going to be a lot of markup, because it's, if this, if this amendment passes, it's just going to be part of the, the House, and homeowners don't have to request that.
And are there, would you anticipate any other additional costs associated with changes in the code? I don't mean to put you on the spot, that's?
No, not really, and as you may expect, every time we adopt a new code cycle, it is more stringent than the previous cycle. So, there are some unknown costs that I'm sure will happen with the new codes, because when you make something stricter, for example, there's more insulation in the attic, well, that's not free.
Yeah.
You have to pay for that. So, there's always a built-in cost to adopting these codes, especially for the builders who are buying these materials.
Yep. So, I, so, as I said earlier, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, because I think it's the right thing to do with what you brought us as a recommendation. But, but I do think it's important, or under the, under the principle of do no harm, that when we do this, it's incumbent upon us, not the council so much, I think, as the staff, to apply themselves to the question of, now that the council has increased cost, what are we going to do to offset those costs in the interest of do no harm, right, in terms of housing? And I'm, so I'm going to beat the drum again about, about streamlining or accelerating our permitting process. So, whether it's on the planning side or public works and natural resources side, as we do this for the right reason, that I'm going to, I am going to continue to press, and I hope we set a goal in 2022, that we can evaluate, without compromising the quality of decisions, the timeframe for getting them made, for permitting the very residences we're talking about. Every single day that it's in that process, longer than it needs to be, adds cost, right? So, that's the, that's the only way we can offset, as a council or as a staff, it seems to me, what we've done tonight. So, under do no harm, I want to make certain that we're paying real close attention to this. The other thing I would say, under do no harm, I didn't want to weigh in earlier, because I knew I had this on the agenda, I want to say thanks to the, to the stand-up residents of Longmont. As I look at that list of people, there's no way we could afford to cover the time of John Creighton and, you know, and everyone else who's on that list, that they would lean into this issue of, of, of housing and say, please, listen to us. I appreciate the fact that they have a message, and I think we need to listen. And part of it is listening to both this recommendation and what we can do to offset those costs. Thanks, Baz.
Thank you.
I move, unless there's other comments, I move approval of ordinance 2021-65.
All right, Dr. Waters moved ordinance 2021-65 on first reading, and Councilmember Martin seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, nine A, ordinance 2021-65 passes on first reading. Was, were you also E1 and E2? Let's go with E1.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. For me, it's instructive when we get the, our financial policies, just to have to, have a chance to scroll through them. There's so much on this agenda tonight that is a reflection of the, the application and the translation of policy to practice, right? What we did with electric rates tonight, a number of things. But what was most interesting to me, to be reminded, as we, as I went through the, through the financial policies, was, was most of the policies under the section on capital improvement projects. Because I was reminded, as we apply those policies, turn, translate policy to practice, how, the degree to which the question is answered, that gets asked of us over and over again, to what degree does growth pay for itself, right? Sandy, I, you're, I'm looking at you, because I think you're probably the one to just reflect a bit on what those policies translate into in terms of revenues, without pinning you down, but the, the kinds of revenues that allow us to do things in the community, keep rates down, build parks, not where there's new development, but other parts of the community where the, where the, where residents benefit. Is, can you just reflect a bit on what's in those policies, so whoever's listening has an idea?
Councilmember Waters, Mayor Bagley, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. If you take a look at your financial policies, I think what you're talking about is, is the second to last page in your financial policies, where we really talk about all of the different improvement funds that go along with the financial policies. And of course, this really does cover a wide gamut of things. But if you take a look at the very last piece, what you'll find is that from parks to electric community investment fees, recreation, transportation, water system, and sewer construction. I thought I missed one. Am I missing one other one? It's just important to note that, as you're looking at each of those impact fees and those investment fee funds, that those are really funded by development in order to provide these, each of these services throughout the community. What you say about development paying for itself, these are the financial policies that ensure that that happens.
And I understand, those add costs to housing, so, and that do no harm. So, it reinforces one more time the importance of getting our time, our, our permitting process as lean as it can possibly be. But I do think, it's fun looking at those and to be reminded, and these are the specific examples when the question's asked. Does it? The answer is yes, and this is how.
Yes.
Last time, I think Sandy, or Joanie provided for me a, kind of a 10-year summary, a couple of, maybe a month or so ago, two months ago, of what we've collected in new park development fees over the last 10 years. $23 million plus, as I recall, was the number, that will be used, Fox Meadows, I think, is the next park in the queue, right, for design and, and public input, public engagement. And I'm guessing that some of that $23 million will be used to develop a park like that or others in the community, so. I appreciate that, and I will be happy to move approval of Resolution 2021-105.
I'll second, all right, was moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Martin. All in favor of E1, Resolution 2021-105, this is the only, we don't vote on this again, it's a resolution, so this is it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Resolution 2021-105 passes unanimously. Dr. Waters, want to go E2, Resolution 2021-106?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this resolution. I appreciate all the work that HR and others have done on the pay plan. I, I'm just curious if other council members would be interested. Marcia, or Councilmember Martin, you mentioned earlier in this meeting what Cornerstone is doing with LEDP partners to assist new, in the talent recruitment effort, to assist new, new employees with getting the best possible rates on, on mortgage lending, to accelerate that timeframe, right? As, as an example of what's happening in the private sector. And I'm just curious, are there, are other council members, would you be interested in, in seeing from HR, before we act on a 2023 pay plan, the range of ideas and possibilities that would, would, given, given the hunt and the competition for talent today, no matter what the job, and no matter what the enterprise, it seems to me, we're going to have to get as innovative as we can possibly be with how we structure both salary and other compensation options, right? And I don't know, maybe, maybe there's nothing we can do, but I'd sure love to see if there's a best practice anywhere in the country where a municipality has packaged with an, an offer for employment, housing options that would help those who want to live in the city, who work for the city, have the means for, to the degree that we can, given what we, what we want to do with housing development, be able to, to actually afford to live in the city, right? And I'm not, I have no, I'm not an expert on this, I have no idea what the packages would look like, but I'd sure love to have a chance to be in a conversation or receive recommendations, probably not, it's not for us, it's, maybe there's a policy or question in there. But it's really the work that Joanne and others in the, in the city manager would do between now and then, to look at ways that we put ourselves in a position to compete with the private sector and other municipalities for what we know as a talent pool that everybody's competing for. I think it's going to, it's going to drive our costs, and I know we've got turnover issues, the expense associated with turnover is staggering, in addition to the lost institutional knowledge and the development of skill sets, especially when you think about whether it's on the electric side, anywhere in our utilities or water services, right, to make certain you have the right kind of expertise applied when there are problems. And so, I, I just think we need to be positioned first, best in class in, in competing for talent, and I think we're going to have to get creative in the ways we do it. So, if, if others would be interested in that, there's, I'm not making a motion, I just, I wouldn't want to waste anybody's time. I see Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring is interested. Harold?
Sorry, Mayor, Council, it's interesting you brought that point up, because we've been working on that in, in what we call Workforce of the Future, and we have a group comprised of different individuals from throughout the organization that are working to start to put together things like that. Obviously, this is a much broader perspective, and so, just so you know, we've been heading in that direction, too.
Right.
It's also not just?
I should have known.
I'm going to give you a heads up on this. It's also, in addition to that, it's also other things that we need to take into account, workplace flexibility, work from home. You know, so, you know, and if you read a lot of the current findings, it's both salary benefits and those things, and it's also this other, what I would say, culture?
Yeah.
Components on this, and we're going to, we've been trying to pull something together, and so definitely, I think, that's been on our minds, and I think we need to do it, because I had my first meeting where I'm meeting with supervisors this morning, and really talked about that issue. We are in unprecedented times.
We are.
And if, if we're not there, and we're not there quickly, we're going to be behind the eight ball on this one.
You just, this is, this is a competition we cannot lose.
Correct.
Yeah. We, we, the residents of Longmont, and we're going to, we're going to deal with your salary and Eugene's salary later tonight, and we'll get to it, when, when we get to it, we'll get to it. But I, whether it's you or everybody else in the organization, it is, it is not in our interest to try to, to on the cheap build or maintain a staff. It's just not going to happen. We're not gonna have the talent we need to serve this community the way they expect to be served. So with that, I'm gonna move approval of Resolution 2021-106.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Christensen.
I think Councilman Waters brings up an interesting idea of offering housing. It is being done, I mean, traditionally, teachers were given almost no pay and they were housed somewhere, it was part of their pay. But so it's, it's an old idea of giving people, certainly ministers have always been housed by their congregations, too. So it's an old idea, and it's not a bad idea. I know the Gates Company in Denver provided housing, lots of companies used to provide, that's why it was called a company town, you know, you lived in the housing of the company, too. But I know that municipalities around the state also offer housing, particularly in the mountain towns where the housing is very expensive, and there are a lot of low income workers who cannot possibly afford to live there without subsidized housing. So it's not, it's not a bad idea. It's something worth thinking about, but as as City Manager Dominguez said, we have, we have an unprecedented time of job upheaval, and there are many, many things that people really like and want. Housing is certainly the most pressing of them, but there are other things that they want, and I, but I do think it's a good idea worth thinking about.
All right, great. So there's a motion on the, there's a motion currently on the table for Resolution 2021-106. Again, it's the only vote we'll take on this issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, Resolution 2021-106 passes unanimously. Councilmember Christensen, I believe you were CN, correct? Let's go ahead and you've got the floor.
Okay, just one little question. I don't see anywhere in here because it's, it's the operating plan and draft budget, so it's sort of early on here, but there is no intention to have residential housing in this, is there?
In term, within the BID boundaries, there is not any residential development.
Okay, that's all I wanted to confirm. Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
Say again? All right, so Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
I move Resolution 2021-115.
Second.
All right, it's, it's been, Resolution 2021-115 has been moved by Councilor, or Mayor Protem Rodriguez, I'm sorry, and seconded by Councilmember Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Resolution 2021-115, Resolution 2021-115 passes unanimously. Eugene, I think we got them all, right? All right, okay, all right. I know, I know, but still, but at this point, we can, we can call it good. All right, let's move on. It's 8:30, you want to take a break before we do general business? Let's go ahead, let's go ahead. One of us, at least me too, I wanted, I'd like to take a break, and then we can come back, and I imagine final call, or I imagine we'll have some comments from council and whatnot. So let's go ahead and take a five minute break.
All right, let's go ahead and come back together. Move on to item C-12, which is the general business. So can we have a, can we have a motion to recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, please?
I move.
All right, it's been moved by, it's been moved by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Mayor Protem Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. We are now convened as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One. Let's go on to 12A on our agenda. Number one, specifically a resolution for LGID, sorry, resolution LGID-2021-03. It is a resolution fixing and levying taxes on the real and personal property within the Longmont General Improvement District Number One for the year 2021 to pay budgeted expenses of the district for the 2022 fiscal year. Can we have a motion, please?
I move resolution LGID-2021-03.
I'll second. All right, that's, that's okay. It was a resolution LGID-2021-03 was moved by Mayor Protem Rodriguez, seconded by Councilmember Idago Ferring. Seeing nobody in the queue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, resolution LGID-2021-03 passes unanimously. Mayor Protem, you want to do the second one, too?
Sure. I move resolution LGID-2021-04.
Resolution LGID-2021-04 was moved by Mayor Protem Rodriguez. It was seconded by Councilmember, I think it was Peck. All in favor, I'm sorry. Dr. Waters?
Yeah, I, I assume I'm not the only one who has no enclosures for this item. I should have called and asked that question earlier.
They're at A. Councilmember Warren?
Oh, under, okay, yeah, I got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
All right, there is a motion. All in favor of resolution LGID-2021-04, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to item 12B, resolution LURA. I'm sorry, say again. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, does someone want to make a motion?
My move adjournment of the, no, of the General Improvement District Board.
Convene the Commissioners of the Lura.
And convene Commissioners of Lura.
The Chair will take that as a, an eloquently stated motion to adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and convene as the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. The motion was made by Dr. Waters, was seconded by Councilmember Idago Ferring with a laugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now convened as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. So let's go on to 12B, resolution LURA-2021-01, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority adopting the annual budget for the authority for the fiscal year 2022.
I move resolution LURA-2021-01.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, resolution LURA-2021-01 passes unanimously. All right, let's go ahead. Can we have a motion to adjourn as the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council? Dr. Waters, you'd like to try that again?
I move we adjourn as the Commissioners of the Lura and reconvene as Longmont City Council.
All right. Okay, it was moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Waters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We are once again in the Longmont City Council. Look, magic. All right, let's go ahead to 12C. We, it's the review, we are to review the compensation for employees appointed by the City Council, specifically the City Manager and the City Attorney by way of information for council. I see Dr. Waters, you're in the queue, but just so you know, so just by way of information reminder, last week, we met an executive session with both our City Attorney and City Manager, and we discussed, and we had their performance evaluation, their performance review, and also discussed, discussed as a council what we thought would or would not be appropriate as far as their continued tenure, compensation, attitudes, overall feedback. And so we did not take a vote, we did not make any decisions, and that is to be done tonight. And so I also took what some of us had said and talked with Harold and Eugene about different ideas, and we can talk about that as well. So I'm going to go ahead and, see you're in the queue, Dr. Waters. Do you want to go ahead and take the floor?
So we're going to deal with maybe the City Attorney first? So let me just offer this kind of narrative before I get into a motion. Going back to the conversation we had earlier about talent recruitment and retention, what is true for our technical staff, what is true for everybody in a, in a high-profile, critical job is true for both the City Manager and the City Attorney. And of the employees that we supervise, there are three, the two that we have here tonight, maybe the only two, I don't know, may, maybe the only two who are not compensated at a level that's consistent with the city's philosophy of being at-market plus a percent or two. So as we looked at the data, it's clear that, that Eugene, I'm going to make a motion on the City Attorney's compensation. He's currently compensated 6.7% below what the market is for comparable municipalities in the front range. To get him at-market would mean adjusting his salary at least to that much, and then a bit more if we're going to put him just above 50, the at-market 50% at-market. So I'm going to move that we adjust Eugene May's annual salary to be at-market, which is consistent with the City of Longmont's philosophy. In approach to compensation, Eugene's salary is currently 6.7% below the market rate for comparable municipalities. Compensating Eugene at-market requires increasing his annual salary $15,680. So I move we adjust Eugene's salary this amount in the annual, for an annual total of $217,736, and I will have a second motion once we approve this.
It's been moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Martin. I believe that figure was, was market plus 1%. You said at-market, but just is the motion?
It is that market plus 1%.
Okay, all right, okay, just, just making sure. So that is the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Eugene. You do a fantastic job as our City Attorney.
I have a second motion.
Well, I'll get right to it.
Okay.
The, but the other thing is that oftentimes, actually, I'll say what I'm going to say after you, you're done. Go ahead, Dr. Waters.
So here's the, here's the second part of the motion. As we talked earlier, as I commented earlier, and I, and I haven't seen all the data on turnover, we need to be as creative, in this case, what I'm going to suggest isn't very creative, I don't think, but as aggressive as, as we, as any other municipality would be to keep the talent on the job that we have on the job. I know Eugene's been understaffed for the last couple of years, that the pandemic took its toll to do, to accomplish what they, what he and his staff have accomplished over the last couple of years. Short-staffed is pretty remarkable. And the worst thing that could happen would be for us to lose either the City Manager or the City Attorney. So I'm going to further move that we authorize, consistent with the city's plan on exceptional pay, exceptional pay for Eugene as a one-time payment in the amount of $30,000. With this payment being made, it could be made by the end of '22 or '21 or early in '22, I would leave that up to Eugene in terms of what his advice would be from his tax accountant. And that this would be exceptional pay as a retention bonus, meaning that for that, for Eugene to receive that payment, he would be, the assumption is he would stay with the city for the next two years, that if he left the city's employment, by his choice, between now and the end of 2023, that money would be reimbursed to the city. So the exceptional pay in this case is as a retention bonus. We'll deal with whatever the, whatever other annual adjustments would have to be made as, as time goes by. That's the motion.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Waters and seconded by Councilmember Martin, and I'm just, nobody's in the queue, but I'm just going to chime in just real quick. The reason why that was a little different was afterwards, I'm a big believer that this is a negotiation, meaning that it's, it's appropriate when you are an executive and you are, you just don't go to somebody and go, oh, by the way, this is what we pay you, and this is what you'll do, like, take it or leave it. I did mention after executive session, as is the mayor's prerogative to talk to either A, the press, and B, whatever the topic is, and I mentioned to them the idea of a retention bonus, and it was actually Harold Dominguez who said, you know what, that's not a problem, but it would be more useful to get the money and pay it back if we left than wait to get the money in two years. And so I had mentioned that to Dr. Waters, and, and that is why he adjusted, I think, a little bit of what, what we talked about, so.
Correct. That sounds like, by the way, that from the City Manager, like a man with one kid in college and one about to go.
Yes, yes, indeed. So, all right, all in favor of the motion to provide Eugene May with a retention bonus of $30,000 to be paid whenever, but to be returned in the event he quits or leaves prior to the December 31, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries unanimously. Eugene, on behalf of City Council, it's been a rough, rough, rough couple of years. You're doing phenomenal, keep it up, know your love, know you're appreciated, you're respected, and we really appreciate all you do for the city, so, well deserved. And for, and I know people will get upset, there will be Times Call, there's TC Line comments, letters to the editor. At the end of the day, I'm very aware that Eugene May receives a lot more than the average income in Longmont and Boulder County, but he's an attorney, he's a great attorney, and it's, it's, we're not even paying him the most of all the, the like cities of similar size in, in our region. We're just paying him the average, and, and the reality is, you're, you're far beyond average, and so it's only 1% more than average, but don't let it go to your head, but we do appreciate you, so thank you, Eugene. All right, let's go on to the City Manager. Anyone want to, anybody want to, Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, since this is my last meeting, I would like to say a few things, so.
No, no, what I mean is, we're talking about City Manager. We still have to do his compensation. Is that what you're going to?
Oh, 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 oh.
Well, you can address that at your last meeting, you can go ahead and do it.
No.
No, no, okay. All right, nobody's in the queue, so I'm going to go ahead and do it. Anybody else want to do it?
No.
Well, I was.
No, no, no.
Grabbed the wrong notebook, so I was going to ask for a recess. Talk to you.
Oh, no, that's, that's, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
We can't allow a notebook.
You want me to do, okay, all right. So I don't, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. We're, we're good here. No, no, it's all good. So we're getting a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
We lost our notes.
We, sorry, Harold, you're going to have to stay. All right, no, I'm going to go ahead, and so we actually discussed very, the same thing. So the motion is, I move that we put Harold at 101% of market. I don't have the exact dollar figure there, but HR can figure that out for us, and, and as well as a retention bonus of $40,000 under the same terms as the City Attorney, specifically taking that money whenever you want, with the understanding you pay it back if you leave prior to December 31, 2023. That's the motion. Councilmember Peck seconds it? Let's go ahead, and Councilmember Idago Ferring?
Thank you, and thank you for doing that so eloquently. I didn't want to mess this up. So, you know, as I was looking at the comparable salary data for both the City Manager and City Attorney, looking how, there is a, there is a stark difference, especially in comparison with the City Attorney's number of years in our city, 12 years, that was the highest of the other comparable cities. So that is huge, to have that longevity, that, the amount of years of institutional knowledge that we, that we need, especially as we're looking at so many folks coming up to retire. The other part for the City Manager, looking at numbers in the, within the population, so we're at about 90, 96,000, and looking at other City Manager salaries that are close to that range, how much lower our City Manager gets paid, we really, you know, we need to be, you know, if we're looking at, you know, having competitive salaries for our staff, you know, we really, we, we need to show that, and we need to honor that. So I, that was, that was one of the, the key ideas, you know, I, I'm a negotiator for our St. Brain Valley School District for the master agreement, and I, as I'm looking at the, the schedule, I'm thinking, you know, we, we do have to, to make sure that what we ask our City Manager to do, and the, for a population of this size, that they're getting paid for what, you know, for what other communities in our area are, near us are getting, are getting paid, so keep that, that rate competitive, so, so thank you, and I appreciate your, your hard work.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. In addition to that good analysis by Councilmember Idago Ferring, I would like to also add that if you look at the experiences and outcomes that this city has enjoyed over the past, oh, you know, at least seven years since, since 2013, and look at the things that happened in other cities that Longmont has made out like a bandit, and everybody who blames the council for things that they don't like is absolutely right to do that, because that's what we are there for. But the City Manager and the City Attorney are responsible for all the successes that Longmont has enjoyed. This is the hardest management problem I have ever encountered in a 40-year career, and, you know, we're, we're getting a whole lot more than just average plus here. So I want the public to understand that, that we live in a city that is a great city because of what these men have done. That's all.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and for the comments you made about, we're going to hear about this in the TC Line and letters to the editor, I would, I would just like the public to know that we did not give a review last year to either the City Attorney or City Manager, so this is a two-year review, but just letting you know what we, what they went through, both legally and managing the city, was COVID, was the Longmont Housing Authority taking that over and managing it and totally re-finance, redoing the finances, managing the airport, and all the legality that goes into that once we lost our, our airport manager, and also dealing with the Public Safety Chief as far as that interim Public Safety Chief and the legalities that went into that, as far as the union issues. So they have definitely earned this money, and I don't think we would be coming out of the last two years without these two gentlemen, so thank you very much, and we expect you to earn that $30,000 and $40,000. Thank you, yes.
You may clap. Excuse me, the audience, I mean, we can clap, but expressing displays of approval or disapproval is wholly inappropriate. I don't know who you are, but I would appreciate it if you would please calm down. That's, that's my wife, by the way, I got married two weeks ago, and I'll introduce you at the end. You may clap! All right, so Councilmember Christensen?
Well, just to add to the little love fest here, but I, I agree with what all of my fellow council members have said. We're really very, very grateful to both of you. Eugene works very hard and doesn't, he's very modest about what he accomplishes. I was glad that he gave us a list of all the things he'd accomplished, because it was really quite incredible. He just simply does things, and we don't have to hear about him or deal with him, but they get taken care of, and he keeps the city safe, and he keeps us from making errors that will get us into trouble. And Harold has done an incredible job with all of the, all of the stuff from, from, for the last, let's see, it's been more than, it's been about 10 years, right? Nine years? Yeah. You came in just before the flood.
Yep.
So you've had many, many things to do, and I, I agree with Councilwoman Peck. I don't know that we would have gotten through this very well, particularly all the things that cropped up this year, aside from COVID, having to do with the airport and the police, the safety, Chief of Safety, finding a new Chief of Safety, and, anyway, so I, I just want to say thank you very much, and I am personally very grateful for all the help both of you have given me and advice. Thank you.
All right, neither one of you are quitting tonight, right? All right, good. I don't care. Just, and also before November 8th, right? Okay, we're good, we're good.
I think you need to vote online.
Harold?
Dark.
I, I think that, you know what, you know, making me look bad's not good, not, not good. All right, all in favor of giving chucklehead number one his raise, no, all in favor of, of raising Harold Dominguez's salary to 101% of market, as well as a $40,000 retention bonus to be earned only in the event that he stays through the end of the year 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right? I'm glad to say that that is also unanimous. Well done. Both of you men are, I consider you friends, and I consider you to be the best in your industry, and so you should be paid as such, and I wish we had more money to give you, but, you know, pitchforks and torches, they still exist, so you'll take the money hopefully and stick around and be happy. All right, let's go ahead and move on to final call, public invited to be heard.
Mayor, before you do that.
Yeah.
Two comments. So to implement the motions you just made, I would imagine my office would draft changes to the employment contracts, especially the retention bonus piece of it. I'll have one of my staff attorneys do that for the City Manager, and then I'll just copy that over to the City Attorneys. And then I also did have a request for an amendment to my employment contract. The city contributes to deferred compensation. I'd like to be able to have the option of choosing whether that goes to base salary or deferred compensation. This is a change that the City Manager made in 2016 to his employment contract. On a personal note, my son just started college, I've got another daughter in 10th grade, and I think I'm going to need that financial flexibility coming up, and the red line was in your contract if you would consider that amendment.
So do we need a motion on that?
Joan, do you want to do that? Hold on one second, let me get you on the mic here. Go ahead. Wait, wait, there you go. Go ahead.
I move that we allow Eugene to amend the contract, or we amend Eugene's employment contract to give him the flexibility for his deferred compensation.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that passes unanimously. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do we need, do we need, to give direction in terms of redrafting contracts?
I don't think so.
You'll just do that.
They'll just do it. All right, let's go on to, now we'll go on to final, is that okay with you, Harold? You know, is that, that all right?
We're good.
All right, just checking. Now let's go on to final call, public invited to be heard. Sergeant Mortensen, you want to come and say anything? No? Anybody? Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and close final call. Let's go on to Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Christensen?
Okay, this is the last time you'll have to hear from me, so be patient. This is my last city council meeting as a council member. It has been my very deep honor to serve the 97,000-plus residents of Longmont for the last eight years. I've intensively learned so much and met so many wonderful and dedicated people. I've seen the best of Longmont. I've also seen the worst, but that's life. The people of Longmont deserve to know what I've done for the last eight years, so here goes. I brought back and greatly expanded the Sustainability Plan, which had been forbidden by a previous council, and I resuscitated the Sustainability Advisory Board. I initiated City Services of Composting. In 2015, I suggested the city participate in the mayor, the First Lady's Mayor's Challenge to End Homelessness. A previous mayor said he was too busy. In 2017, along with Councilwoman Finley, we introduced the Veterans Community Project from Kansas City. We had seen a demo at the National League of Cities, which we were attending at the conference. In 2015, two weeks after the election, in response to numerous incidents of hate graffiti, hate speech, and discrimination based denial of service, I created Resolution 123 affirming Longmont's commitment to stand together and reject hate. That was followed up by a discussion for several weeks about where Longmont, how Longmont Police Department and Social Services treated and, treated undocumented citizens, or undocumented residents, including DACA residents, and clarified what the police did and did not do, and what Social Services did and did not do for undocumented residents, including the DACA people. I stood up against a gun lobbyist seeking to hijack Constitution and Citizenship Day and turning it into Gun Safety Day. I took personal offense at this because my father worked very hard for citizenship, and he took it very seriously. He was very proud of being a citizen and very proud of the Constitution, and he liked his guns, but he was not in love with them. I created a new revenue stream of six, over $600,000 by initiating legalized, registered, taxed marijuana shops in Longmont. Initiated and fought for years for the Affordable Housing Ordinance despite great opposition, delays, but we have it. One week after the death of Elijah McCain in Aurora, I called for a report on Longmont Police's use of ketamine, and I initiated and restored the city's very sensible ban on residential metro districts. So I came in in a flood, and I'm leaving in a pandemic, but that's just life. We have to do, we do the best we can to plan for and imagine the future, and then when emergencies come up, we just handle it. The people of Longmont will always be smart enough and tough enough and generous enough to handle anything. Okay.
All right, anybody else? I guess I'm just going to follow up, and I just want to say I'm excited. After 10 years, the, I remember when, back in, when I graduated law school and business school, I didn't have internet, and so literally, I mean, I remember the last, like, my final year of grad school when internet was actually available, and there were like three websites, you know? And that was, that was about, that was a little over 20 years ago, and half that time I've served in public office on the City Council, that's just, that's long enough for anybody. And I guess the only thing is, I want to say thank you to city staff and this council and previous councils, as well as my, my family, and, and just, it was, it was an interesting experience and one that I will cherish and remember, and wish the best to whoever winds up filling this seat and whoever winds up serving on the City Council, not only in this next term, but also moving forward. And someday I'll be dead, and my picture will be up on that wall, and no one will have a frickin' clue who I was or what I did, and, but, but... And, uh, but, but the wheel keeps turning, so. Love Longmont, uh, may she just, uh, just keep rocking along. Love this town. So anybody else? All right, I guess finally, I guess what I do want to say, I joked earlier, but, um, before we adj, that isn't the new Mrs. Bagley up there, that's Loose Maria. You won't have a chance to get to know her because I'm done. People keep asking me, uh, what are you going to do now? Well, um, I've got a family, I've got children, um, and I plan on focusing on family and, and my, my career. And so, um, that, that, that's it. So I figured she should come tonight and at least see her, what her husband did for 10 years. And she did make the comment that she's glad that this is the only one she had to go to. So, me too. So, all right, that said, city manager, would you like to say anything? Maybe stand up? Thank us? Applause?
Mayor, council.
You know? I, I cannot. Do you want to go, can you turn on your mic?
Yeah, Mayor, council, um, I did want to thank council for your support and confidence, um, as, um, in the review and in your actions. I really appreciate it. It, it has been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. It, it's interesting, we were talking the last, I don't know if it's two years, almost two years, with everything that we've had to go through, uh, this has probably been one of the most challenging times, I think, we've had as an organization and a community, as individuals. Um, and so I want to thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, all the members of our organization. I'm only as successful as they are and, and what they do on a daily basis, and I think it's appropriate for me to say that to each and every one of them. You know, they, they accept the challenges, um, and they, they're willing to tackle the hard stuff with us. And so to them, I wanted to say I appreciate each and every one of them because of this, and, and I look forward to continue serving this great community. Best decision I've ever made moving here, um, for me and my family, and, um, I'm just happy that I can continue doing that. So thank, thank each and every one of you for our conversations, uh, your support, the tough conversations. I think that's what makes us, uh, a great community. So I really wanted to let you know I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Eugene?
Mayor and council, city manager took a lot of my thunder, but I do want to thank you for your support. Uh, as, as you noted, I'm not one for recognition. I'm actually quite uncomfortable getting it. The one thing I did want to say is you have a great team here. And a lot of my success is dependent upon the guy sitting next to me. And he's a great city manager, and we make a great team, uh, in service of this community and this council. And we really appreciate, uh, all the interactions we had and, uh, the hard, honest conversations, and I think that's what makes us grow as an organization and have great outcomes for our community. And in particular, I wanted to thank the mayor and, uh, Councilmember Christensen for their service here. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Mayor, in particular, we had some good times and some bad times, uh, but fun all the way. A wild ride, uh, and I wish you your best in your future endeavors.
With that, I move that we adjourn. It's been moved and seconded, seconded by Councilmember Martin. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.